Well, good evening and welcome to the November 10th, 2020, meeting of your Santa Monica City Council. Being a second Tuesday, this is a regular meeting of our council, although due to the ongoing pandemic, we continue to meet online as allowed other governors' modifications of the Brown Act. And we will be taking public input tonight by telephone. That number is 310-458-8423. And the clerk will tell you more about that when we get to that, but for now, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember McCowen. I can't hear you. Here, sorry, okay. Councilmember Hamerich.
Here.
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Winter.
Here.
Councilmember Hara.
Here.
Mayor Potem O'Day.
Present.
And Mayor McCowen.
And I'm here too, so we have a full house, all seven council members with us for this November 10th meeting. And we'll get started with the closed sessions, if the clerk would call that, please.
We have two closed session items. The first one is existing litigation, Williams versus the city of Santa Monica. And then the second we have is an anticipated litigation. And it's a request to enter into a lawsuit as an amicus curi. And this is Donald Trump versus the state of New York. And we have one caller for this closed session.
What we'll do then at this point is we'll open the public hearing on the closed sessions. And if we go to the clerk in the telephones, please bring us our caller.
You're answering Matt Neco.
Matt Neco, welcome to the meeting, your time starts now.
Thank you, good evening, City Council. It's been a bit of a time since I've last called in and participated in City Council meetings. But I would like to indicate, as I have in the past, that with regard to amicus curi briefs and decisions as to whether to participate in those, I believe that those are public policy matters that should be open to discussion in front of a public hearing and with input from members of the public. And that these issues are not suitable for closed hearing sessions. And they are being mischaracterized as anticipated litigation. Because we, as a city, would not actually be litigants. We wouldn't be defendants, nor would we be plaintiffs to any of these proceedings where we are considering joining as amicus. And these are public policy decisions, sometimes they cost the city money and resources. And again, I believe that these should be fully public hearings. And it's my hope that with a turnover foreseen in City Council coming up, a welcome turnover, I might add, that these matters will be publicly heard in the future instead of being behind closed doors in violation, I believe, of the law.
Thank you.
And can we check if there are any other callers?
No, that was the only caller.
That would close the public hearing then on tonight's consent calendar. We turn to our interim city attorney for an estimate of when we might be back, which can be no sooner than 6:30, as I understand it.
I expect that we will be back by 6:30, I think it will take less than that.
Okay, so we'll be back at 6:30 into open session.
[326.30]
Well, good evening and welcome back to the regular meeting of your Santa Monica City Council, Tuesday, November 2020. Although it's a regular meeting, we are again meeting by a teleconference. Public input will be by telephone. That phone number is 310-458-8423. So we've been recessed, we've been in closed sessions speaking with our interim city attorney, and I'll turn to George Goodon now and ask for a report out from closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. On item 1A, the plaintiff alleges a traumatic brain injury resulting from tripping on a parkway tree root near 212 San Vicente Boulevard. The city does not admit the allegations, but to potentially avoid the expense and burden of further litigation, the city attorney recommends authorization to serve a CCP 998 off the compromise in the amount of $135,000.
Will it move like Member Davis?
Second by Councilmember Hemmerich.
Yes, it was.
Okay. Okay. Councilmember McCowen? Fair Pro Tim O'Day? And Mayor McKeown?
Yes. That recommendation is approved unanimously by a seven to nothing vote of the city council. And we had one other item on the closed session.
Yes, on item 1B, given the potential impacts on funding and representation for California and local jurisdictions within California, the city attorney recommends that the council authorize the city to sign on to an amicus brief to be filed in this case by Santa Clara County, supporting the state of New York's position, but the president's direction to undocumented immigrants be excluded from the population count used to apportion congressional seats violates both the statutes governing the census and the United States Constitution.
I think I heard a motion by Councilmember Hara with a second by Councilmember Davis. Okay. Any discussion? Is he none? A roll call, please.
Fair Pro Tim O'Day? And Mayor McKeown?
Yes. That recommendation is approved unanimously by a seven to nothing vote of the council. Leave that complete. Our report out from closed session, correct?
Yes, that is the end of the report from closed session.
And that'll move us on to some reports from our city managers. The clerk would call the first of those.
Item 2A is city manager's report, new city website and online services. And you currently have no callers on hold for this item.
Because they're all exploring our new website, I'm sure. Who will be doing the report on this?
Mayor and members of the city council, I can begin simply by saying that our information services department, supported by other departments across the city, including our office of communications, has been working very hard throughout the pandemic, not only to respond to the situations in which we find ourselves, but to continue to move key projects forward, including projects that help us to communicate as effectively as possible with the residents of the city. So I want to express my appreciation to them for all the work that's been done to date. And with that, I'll turn it over to Joseph Sevattello, your chief information officer.
Thank you. Good evening, honorable mayor and council. Joseph Sevattello, the city's chief information officer and head of the information services department. We in ISD very much appreciate the opportunity to speak with you about the launch of Santa Monica's new web presence at santamonica.gov and our new homepage and design that launched on October 30th. As you may know, the management and development of the city's web presence was transferred to ISD in July of this year. So doing, we changed the focus of web development from outside third parties to the talented, dedicated women and men of the digital transformation and development division of ISD. We believe that taking the development of the web presence in-house with lower costs, quickened development, and emphasized the talent and dedication of our staff. Over the past four months, the six individuals of the web team have done tremendous work, laying the foundation for the transformation of the city's web presence and underlying digital services, beginning with the launch of the new homepage. I'm going to now ask two members of that team, Yvonne Varela, ISD's project portfolio coordinator, and Jeremy Peterson, ISD's user experience and content lead, to provide you with a brief presentation about the work leading up to the homepage launch and our plans for the continued development of the city's web presence. Jeremy?
Good evening. Let me pull up our presentation for you. So good evening, honorable mayor and city council. Tonight, we look forward to providing you with an update on what has been completed and what work the community can look forward to regarding the city's website project. Before I get started, however, I want to recognize that while Yvonne and I are here before you tonight, we are part of a larger team of dedicated staff who are working to improve our digital experience for our community. On the development side, we have the talented web developers, Seville Turner, Kevin Hopson, and Eric Cho. Our new enterprise architect, Prasanna Joshi. sponsoring the project is your chief information officer, Joseph Sevattello. Our project manager, Yvonne Varela, and myself, Jeremy Peterson. And while they're not pictured here, I would be remiss to not also mention our talented web leads who are helping to shepherd this project on behalf of their departments, as well as the office of communications who set the foundation for this work and continues to be valuable partners in moving it forward. So to understand where we are and where we're going, let's start with what has changed since the last time that we've updated you. Due to COVID-19, we recognize that there's an increasing need for us to accelerate our access to digital resources, online processes, and information. To meet this need, the project has evolved to use an iterative approach focused on providing timely updates and releases to the community as soon as they become available. The first phase of our iterative process was the launch of our new homepage, which went live on October 30th. And this allowed us to streamline our web traffic under one unified domain, santamonica.gov. As new features become available, we will continue to consolidate our web presence, narrowing down from our current 54 domain names to just two, santamonica.gov and bigbluebus.com. Additionally, the current site navigation primarily directs users to existing content which lives across multiple websites and platforms. But as new functionality becomes available, those pages will also be consolidated from our current 45,000 pages to less than 2,000. As you will see later in this presentation, we can accomplish this by streamlining how we provide information to the community so that it's easy to find, intuitive, and developed in a way that puts the needs of the user first. So from our analytics, we know that over 70% of all of our web traffic comes from mobile devices, and this is a trend that continues to increase year over year. So in recognizing this, we developed those sites to be mobile-friendly and then responsive on other devices such as desktop and tablet. With the launch of our new homepage on October 30th, also came streamlined search functionality which generates results pulled from multiple city websites. So what this means is that users will go to santamonica.gov and can still search for information that lives on smgov.net, the library website, the police website, and more. In addition, we also released an intuitive navigation that reflects how users engage with our website and gives us the flexibility to create multiple layers for easy navigation. As we work to reimagine how we deliver services to the community, we also recognize the need to reimagine how we present those services by creating a unified design and tone of voice across the site. So now users will not only find the information in one place, but also find it in a different location.
Will it move like Member Davis?
Second by Chairman.
I'm sorry, was the second by Councilmember Hemmerich?
Yes, it was.
Okay. Okay. Councilmember McCowen? And Mayor McKeown?
Yes. That recommendation is approved unanimously by a seven to nothing vote of the council. Leave that complete. Our report out from closed session, correct?
Yes, that is the end of the report from closed session.
And that'll move us on to some reports from our city managers. The clerk would call the first of those.
Item 2A is city manager's report, new city website and online services. And you currently have no callers on hold for this item.
Because they're all exploring our new website, I'm sure. Who will be doing the report on this?
Mayor and members of the city council, I can begin simply by saying that our information services department, supported by other departments across the city, including our office of communications, has been working very hard throughout the pandemic, not only to respond to the situations in which we find ourselves, but to continue to move key projects forward, including projects that help us to communicate as effectively as possible with the residents of the city. So I want to express my appreciation to them for all the work that's been done to date. And with that, I'll turn it over to Joseph Sevattello, your chief information officer.
Thank you. Good evening, honorable mayor and council. Joseph Sevattello, the city's chief information officer and head of the information services department. We in ISD very much appreciate the opportunity to speak with you about the launch of Santa Monica's new web presence at santamonica.gov and our new homepage and design that launched on October 30th. As you may know, the management and development of the city's web presence was transferred to ISD in July of this year. So doing, we changed the focus of web development from outside third parties to the talented, dedicated women and men of the digital transformation and development division of ISD. We believe that taking the development of the web presence in-house with lower costs, quickened development, and emphasized the talent and dedication of our staff. Over the past four months, the six individuals of the web team have done tremendous work, laying the foundation for the transformation of the city's web presence and underlying digital services, beginning with the launch of the new homepage. I'm going to now ask two members of that team, Yvonne Varela, ISD's project portfolio coordinator, and Jeremy Peterson, ISD's user experience and content lead, to provide you with a brief presentation about the work leading up to the homepage launch and our plans for the continued development of the city's web presence. Jeremy?
Good evening. Let me pull up our presentation for you. So good evening, honorable mayor and city council. Tonight, we look forward to providing you with an update on what has been completed and what work the community can look forward to regarding the city's website project. Before I get started, however, I want to recognize that while Yvonne and I are here before you tonight, we are part of a larger team of dedicated staff who are working to improve our digital experience for our community. On the development side, we have the talented web developers, Seville Turner, Kevin Hopson, and Eric Cho. Our new enterprise architect, Prasanna Joshi. sponsoring the project is your chief information officer, Joseph Sevattello. Our project manager, Yvonne Varela, and myself, Jeremy Peterson. And while they're not pictured here, I would be remiss to not also mention our talented web leads who are helping to shepherd this project on behalf of their departments, as well as the office of communications who set the foundation for this work and continues to be valuable partners in moving it forward. So to understand where we are and where we're going, let's start with what has changed since the last time that we've updated you. Due to COVID-19, we recognize that there's an increasing need for us to accelerate our access to digital resources, online processes, and information. To meet this need, the project has evolved to use an iterative approach focused on providing timely updates and releases to the community as soon as they become available. The first phase of our iterative process was the launch of our new homepage, which went live on October 30th. And this allowed us to streamline our web traffic under one unified domain, santamonica.gov. As new features become available, we will continue to consolidate our web presence, narrowing down from our current 54 domain names to just two, santamonica.gov and bigbluebus.com. Additionally, the current site navigation primarily directs users to existing content which lives across multiple websites and platforms. But as new functionality becomes available, those pages will also be consolidated from our current 45,000 pages to less than 2,000. As you will see later in this presentation, we can accomplish this by streamlining how we provide information to the community so that it's easy to find, intuitive, and developed in a way that puts the needs of the user first. So from our analytics, we know that over 70% of all of our web traffic comes from mobile devices, and this is a trend that continues to increase year over year. So in recognizing this, we developed those sites to be mobile-friendly and then responsive on other devices such as desktop and tablet. With the launch of our new homepage on October 30th, also came streamlined search functionality which generates results pulled from multiple city websites. So what this means is that users will go to santamonica.gov and can still search for information that lives on smgov.net, the library website, the police website, and more. In addition, we also released an intuitive navigation that reflects how users engage with our website and gives us the flexibility to create multiple layers for easy navigation. As we work to reimagine how we deliver services to the community, we also recognize the need to reimagine how we present those services by creating a unified design and tone of voice across the site. So now users will not only find the information in one place,
including projects that help us to communicate as effectively as possible with the residents of the city. So I want to express my appreciation to them for all the work that's been done to date, and with that, I'll turn it over to Joseph Sebatello, your Chief Information Officer.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. Joseph Sebatello, the city's Chief Information Officer and head of the Information Services Department. We in ISD very much appreciate the opportunity to speak with you about the launch of Santa Monica's new web presence at santamonica.gov and our new homepage and design that launched on October 30th. As you may know, the management and development of the city's web presence was transferred to ISD in July of this year. So doing, we changed the focus of web development from outside third parties to the talented, dedicated women and men of the Digital Transformation and Development Division of ISD. We believe that taking the development of the web presence in-house with lower costs, quick in development, and emphasize the talent and dedication of our staff. Over the past four months, the six individuals of the web team have done tremendous work, laying the foundation for the transformation of the city's web presence and underlying digital services, beginning with the launch of the new homepage. I'm going to now ask two members of that team, Yvonne Varela, ISD's Project Portfolio Coordinator, and Jeremy Peterson, ISD's User Experience and Content Lead, to provide you with a brief presentation about the work leading up to the homepage launch and our plans for the continued development of the city's web presence. Jeremy?
Good evening. Let me pull up our presentation for you. So, good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Tonight, we look forward to providing you with an update on what has been completed and what work the community can look forward to regarding the city's website project. Before I get started, however, I want to recognize that while Yvonne and I are here before you tonight, we are part of a larger team of dedicated staff who are working to improve our digital experience for our community. On the development side, we have the talented web developers, Seville Turner, Kevin Hopson, and Eric Show. Our new enterprise architect, Prasanna Joshi. sponsoring the project is your Chief Information Officer, Joseph Sebatello, our project manager, Yvonne Varela, and myself, Jeremy Peterson. And while we're not, while they're not pictured here, I would be remiss to not also mention our talented web leads who are helping to shepherd this project on behalf of their departments, as well as the Office of Communications who set the foundation for this work and continues to be valuable partners in moving it forward. So to understand where we are and where we're going, let's start with what has changed since the last time that we've updated you. Due to COVID-19, we recognize that there's an increasing need for us to accelerate our access to digital resources, online processes, and information. To meet this need, the project has evolved to use an iterative approach focused on providing timely updates and releases to the community as soon as they become available. The first phase of our iterative process was the launch of our new homepage, which went live on October 30th. And this allowed us to streamline our web traffic under one unified domain, santamonica.gov. As new features become available, we will continue to consolidate our web presence, narrowing down from our current 54 domain names to just two, santamonica.gov and bigbluebus.com. Additionally, the current site navigation primarily directs users to existing content, which lives across multiple websites and platforms. But as new functionality becomes available, those pages will also be consolidated from our current 45,000 pages to less than 2,000. As you will see later in this presentation, we can accomplish this by streamlining how we provide information to the community so that it's easy to find, intuitive, and developed in a way that puts the needs of the user first. So from our analytics, we know that over 70% of all of our web traffic comes from mobile devices, and this is a trend that continues to increase year over year. So in recognizing this, we developed those sites to be mobile-friendly and then responsive on other devices such as desktop and tablet. With the launch of our new homepage on October 30th, also came streamlined search functionality, which generates results pulled from multiple city websites. So what this means is that users will go to santamonica.gov and can still search for information that lives on smgov.net, the library website, the police website, and more. In addition, we also released an intuitive navigation that reflects how users engage with our website and gives us the flexibility to create multiple layers for easy navigation. As we work to reimagine how we deliver services to the community, we also recognize the need to reimagine how we present those services by creating a unified design and tone of voice across the site. So now users will not only find the information in one place, but by applying the city's new brand standards that were developed by the Office of Communications, they'll also see the city as one unified brand versus a collection of different departments, divisions, or programs, each with their own look and feel, websites, logos, et cetera. The consistency creates an improved customer experience and eliminates the confusion of finding multiple websites. In addition, it also improves our efficiency by dedicating resources to enhancing the one unified experience for everyone. So while a lot has changed since we've launched the new homepage, it's also important to recognize what parts of our approach won't be changing. So our team is still committed to providing a 24/7 digital city hall where the community can find the latest information, resources, and updates. And we continue to uphold our commitment to not only meet, but to exceed accessibility standards across the website. In partnership with the Government Alliance on Race and Equity and the Disabilities Commission, every element from content and photography to technology and site structure has been designed to ensure that we're creating the experience that best serves everyone. This same commitment extends to our community values, and you'll see this as the site comes to life in everything from big decisions down to the smallest details. An example of this is when users want to find directions, by default, the program provides them with driving directions. However, as part of our commitment to alternative modes of transportation and promoting a green future, we will be re-engineering the program to provide biking, walking, and public transportation directions first and driving directions last, to make sure every detail of our new website reflects our community priorities and values. So throughout this project, we'll also continue to bring more services online and improve the efficiencies of our digital processes to create a better experience for our community and staff. In each decision that we make, we're also looking at ways to consolidate the tools that we use and uncover new operational efficiencies. Much like the evolving nature of our work, the website will also be open to evolving, improving, and finding better ways to serve our community on a regular basis. So in addition to restructuring the layout for each page, we also have restructured our approach to content. And so as you'll note on this slide, previously, for a user to find information on the farmer's market, they would first need to ascertain which section of the navigation to look at, and if they were familiar with the site, they would look under City Departments. From there, they would need to know exactly what department the farmer's market team operates under, and only then could they find information related to the farmer's market. Not only do our users not engage with our website this way, but it forces our users to understand the complexity of our organization to find information and resources. As you'll see on our new homepage, however, we've solved this problem by shifting to a topic-based approach instead of a department or organizational structure. So before moving on to the next section, I want to take you to the actual website that's been developed and show you some of these features in real time. So here's the new homepage that I mentioned that we launched on October 30th, and you'll see that every detail again reflects our new brand as well as our commitment to providing information to the public. Starting at the top, we've made search easy to find, as well as language services, then make sure that all the information below it and on subsequent pages is translated into the languages that best fit our user. Additionally, you'll notice that our navigation has been updated to be topic-based. It's no longer department-based. And so in the example of the farmer's market, we know that the farmer's market is a program, so you'd click here on Programs. Then we break down our programs into different categories, and in this example, farmer's market. From there, we break down the information again into smaller, more digestible buckets, and in this example, you can then find all the information related to locations, hours, programs and educations, et cetera, about the farmer's market. This is a consistent approach that we take across all of these topics. As you move down the homepage, again, we understand the need to make sure that people can find information quickly, and even though we're narrowing down from 45,000 pages to 2,000, we know that that's still a lot of information for the public to find, and that's why we've put search right here, dead center of the page. As we scroll down, we give timely updates to things that are time-sensitive, such as election results, ways to donate, flu clinics, and more. This is information that will be constantly evolving and updating based on the latest updates for the community. As we scroll down, we've also elevated our services and resources by looking not only at analytics and finding what's most popular, but also talking to our users to see what information should be elevated here on the homepage. These are just nine examples of sort of the top services and resources that people are visiting, but is by no means a collection of all the services and resources that are available on the website. As we move down, we also have a section here which we're calling Initiatives that allows our staff to curate content around common topics and bring this information to light, where we can highlight and showcase multiple webpages around one specific topic area. And in this example, it's content related to advancing equity and inclusion in our community. Finally, as we get down to the bottom of the page, we wanted to make sure that the homepage was informative, but didn't have too much content where it was overbearing. So here we bring all of our press releases and blog posts that's showing the most recent, and then have a quick button where people can access more news. Our footer, which is consistent across all the pages, allows our users to quickly sign up for emails if they want updates on a regular basis that are coming directly to them, as well as ways to follow us on our social media channels. As I talked about earlier, this also comes to light in our mobile environment, and there's a few changes that I will show you here and how users will experience the content in mobile. So again, we're not overwhelming them with too much information, but we're building in a way that's really digestible and easy to consume. So you'll notice on mobile here, our menu comes into what we call a hamburger menu structure, where again, you'll see these familiar topics, programs, services, getting around, and so on. From there, users can dive in by clicking on it and then find the next layer of our menu, which is housing, safety, youth, and seniors. And then again, click to find specific programs related to what they're looking for. This is a way to make sure that our users are given very high-level information and then able to make key decisions to find the information that they need. So I won't go through all these elements again since we talked about them, but you'll see that as we scroll down, these elements become swipeable to make sure that we're being considerate of the amount of space that they're taking up. When items become long, we have ways for them to expand with additional buttons. And you'll see these features come to life as we continue to release and offer new pages throughout the site. So talking about those next steps of the project, over to Yvonne, who will be going through some of those elements.
Thanks, Jeremy. Good evening, Council. Thank you for the opportunity to present today. As Jeremy mentioned earlier, we are taking an iterative and adaptive approach to incrementally transform our current web presence. We're planning for the known changes required to build a new experience while remaining nimble enough to adapt to any new requirements as we go along. Our first step in this journey was to identify a core set of website pages needed to address current and future needs. We then took the set of pages, split them up into manageable development cycles called releases, prioritizing those pages with most aligned to our current public informational needs and architecture. As you can see, our first release this past October was the homepage and site navigation, as these elements would build the visual foundation for the new service-centric experience. To bring the homepage to life, we first started with layout and user experience. Leveraging work performed during the discovery phase of this project, we created a homepage wireframe, as you see here, which conceptualized elements and functions that would be present day one. Next slide. We then moved on to visual design, creating a mock-up which incorporated elements of the city's brand to create the look and feel. Next slide. Once we received sign-off on the design, we moved on to develop the functional requirements necessary to render the homepage. This is where we address platform upgrades and navigational structure to bring new search capabilities and improve performance. After all the functions and features were developed, they were thoroughly tested to confirm the homepage worked as designed. Once all this functionality was tested and validated, it was deployed to our production environment for the public to experience and engage with. Next slide. And so for our upcoming releases, we will use the same approach as we did for the homepage. We will first address functional design, adapting the same user experience and visual elements of the brand currently found in the homepage. This will create the consistent experience across the entire site. We will then design, excuse me, when the design has been finalized, the team will develop the platform to support these new pages and features. When development is complete, we will validate functionality through design review and testing. Once all pages and functions are verified, we will be ready for primetime. We will move forward with deploying the new feature sets to production, making the new webpages available for our content editors to populate. Each release cycle from start to finish will take approximately six weeks to complete. Next slide. With this approach, we anticipate a total of five release cycles to fully transform our web presence within the next year. As you can see, there's a lot of work to do, a lot of information to go through, therefore lots to plan, design, and develop. We are very excited to take part in this effort and look forward to contributing to an enhanced web experience that better serves our Santa Monica community. Thanks.
And I'd like to close our presentation with some news. Happy to inform you that just today, the Center for Digital Governance recognized the city of Santa Monica with a Digital Cities Survey Award. In the category of cities between 75,000 and 124,000 residents, the city of Santa Monica was ranked number five nationally. The award recognized our work in transforming and digitizing existing paper-based processes and workflows for city staff and constituents. You should also point out that we received this distinction before we launched our new web presence. That concludes our presentation about the city's web presence, santamonica.gov, and our new homepage. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much for that. I must say that when that page debuted about 10 days ago, I was struck by not only the aesthetic improvements, but how the page is intuitively functional, and it's a really important service we're providing people. I do wonder about people who've used our old website or changing domain name from smgov.net to santamonica.gov. If people have pages bookmarked, will those be automatically redirected? What will the experience be of a user who's used to our old website?
Yes, we will redirect from smgov.net to santamonica.gov.
And what about email addresses? We've all on the city got smgov.net email addresses. Will that be changing? Do people need to modify their their address books?
So now we have the ability also to have santamonica.gov email addresses. They're actually concurrently received. We have not yet transferred to be the primary sending server to santamonica.gov, but we're now in the process of discussions about how best to introduce that to the city. So the answer to that question is either one of those email addresses will work to receive emails, but sending right now is still through smgov.net, but we can turn that on, implement that, just about it.
I'm not so worried about us. We'll figure it out. But people trying to communicate with the council do not need to change their address book at this point.
No, and even when we make santamonica.gov the primary email address, we'll still keep the alias of that net going for a while.
Other council members have questions? I think we're pretty well awestruck, staff. Thank you for that huge improvement. I think we all acknowledge it was overdue to that website. A truly massive website. You mentioned 40,000 pages. I'd heard 22,000 before. So we shouldn't underestimate how much work that took. Thank you. You did.
Thank you. Now, we had a great team and just going to keep going. We're looking forward to continuing to transform it. And I should say, there's another development that I think is quite interesting that ties into the website. And that has to do with the city's virtual permitting services. And I'd like to give the floor to Ariel Sakaris of the Community Development Department to tell you about that.
You've got the floor. We're seeing your slide.
Ariel, are you muted? My apologies, I was muted. Thank you, Joseph. Great work on the website. It looks wonderful. If I may ask for this slideshow to be turned off for a couple of minutes, I only have one slide, and rather than have you stare at that through my, you know, four to five minutes of talking, this might be best. So, good evening, Mayor and council members. Again, Ariel Sakaris, Building and Safety Manager. And the update I have for you tonight is on some new services that we're providing within our permit services operation to help improve processing times during the city hall closure and during the pandemic. When the city hall closes, the public in March, we felt that we were well-equipped to make the shift over to electronic permitting since all the infrastructure, well, since we have the infrastructure in place to review, process, and plan checks and issue permits. However, as time passed, it became evident that smaller projects, what we refer to as same-day reviews, which typically get permits through just a simple visit to the public counter, those projects were experiencing significant delays. And I'm disappointed to say sometimes the delays were upwards of two months. Clearly, clearly not acceptable. And while our electronic plan review system is capable of processing these permit applications, the workflow is designed to manage multiple rounds of plan review. It's not conducive for smaller projects such as re-roofs, HVC changeouts, water heater replacements, or even small tenant improvements. So a few months ago, I began to look around to see how other agencies were handling the issue and discovered that we weren't the only ones experiencing this. Agencies were either opening to the public in some sort of limited form or processing permits electronically, and every city that I spoke to or encountered that was using some sort of electronic path shared the permitting delays for these simpler, smaller scope over-the-counter project types. Unfortunately, though, I came across a service in South Pasadena where appointments could be scheduled for virtual counter consults with building and safety, planning, and permit tech services. The appointments, again, were just for Q and A sessions with counter staff, and South Pasadena contracts out these services, so there was also that light difference to consider, but fortunately, we were able to use this as a building block to roll out three new virtual permit services for our customers. And if we can launch that slide now, please? Thank you. So these three new virtual services went live Monday last week, which was November 2nd. The first is a virtual same-day slash over-the-counter review. There's virtual permit issuance as well as a virtual building and safety counter. The same-day over-the-counter review is intended to replicate a counter review scenario for qualifying projects only. And ideally, an applicant could get a permit in as little as three days. The process still consists of creating an online application, uploading documents to our electronic system, so we can keep things in a digital format. However, the projects are staying in round one of review. There's not this back and forth of corrections requiring the applicant to re-upload information. And after the, so after an applicant uploads their documents and creates their application, they go and schedule an appointment on a booking website, where a virtual meeting invite is generated and sent to the customer, as well as the city staff that needs to be present at that meeting. So in that meeting, the counter staff will review the project with the customer and get it to approvals, the point of approval, whether at that meeting or subsequent meeting. And once we get it to approval, the customer is then directed to our second virtual service, which is the virtual permit issuance service. As the title suggests, this is a virtual meeting appointment with a permit specialist for the issuance of a building permit. Now eligibility for this service is expanded to any project type, not just the same-day reviews. Basically, any project that's completed plan check, they've gotten all the required approvals, and the project is in a ready-to-issue status, can book an appointment for this service, and this should improve things dramatically because with permit issuance, there's a significant amount of documentation that's required, grant deeds, driver's license, contractor's license, evidence of city business licenses, and all this currently is handled over email, which has become very complicated and tedious and and ends up causing delays. So that should also improve things on that. And the third service is the virtual building and safety counter. And also, again, as it sounds, it's an opportunity to schedule an appointment for a Q and A session with a building and safety plans reviewer. So currently, the way it's been rolled out, the same-day and over-the-counter review appointments are currently available to be scheduled Monday through Thursday, 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM. The virtual permit issuance service is Monday through Thursday, 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM, as well as 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM. And the virtual building and safety counter services are available Monday through Thursday from 1:00 PM to 5:00 PM. from 1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. These are, of course, flexible as we see the types of volume and need to expand the hours and availability, but we wanted to start out in this capacity because it aligns with the average number of same-day review projects that we've been getting on a weekly basis. So that describes the three new services offered, but it's also very important to note that one of the best parts of all of this was that we were able to accommodate the functionality for all three of these services within the city's existing suite of office software. There was no added cost to the city whatsoever to implement this and have it go live and ready for the public. With that, we... URL for the information on all three of these, so customers find out more and schedule appointments, is SantaMonica.gov, that wonderful new website that our ISD staff just presented, And that concludes my presentation and available for any questions.
You know, over the last eight months since coronavirus hit, we've talked a lot about reinventing Santa Monica, and both of these presentations tonight show exactly how we're doing it, at least in the realm of how we connect with residents and those who need to do business with the city. That's quite an impressive accomplishment. Does council have any questions about this? No, I think we're all very appreciative. Thank you for that presentation, and thank you for the work that has made this streamlining of a very important function of our city government possible, and we look forward to many innovations like this in the future as we figure out new ways to connect with the public and serve the public. Well, that happened to be face-to-face thanks to COVID. We have the manager of presentation tonight. Are we ready to go to that? If so, let's the clerk call it.
Item 2B is the City Manager's Report, National Leadership in Sustainability Award from the International Code Council, and you have no callers for that item.
Good evening, council members, mayor, and everyone tuned in. My name is Ariana Vito, and I work for the city's Office of Sustainability and the Environment on climate and energy policies. And I'm pleased to share a video with you tonight from the International Code Council, or known as the ICC for short, awarding Santa Monica their National Leadership in Sustainability Award. This clip was shown earlier at the annual ICC award celebration today, so I hope you enjoy it.
Hello. I'm Greg Johnson, Chair of the International Code Council's Sustainability Membership Council, or SMC. The International Code Council's National Leadership in Sustainability Award recognizes outstanding contributions to codes or public policy advancing the principles of the ICC and SMC in the fields of energy efficiency and sustainability. This year, we are pleased to recognize the city of Santa Monica, California, for its achievements in sustainability in the built environment. In 1994, Santa Monica was one of the first cities in the country to develop a sustainable city plan, implementing landmark strategies to reduce citywide greenhouse gas emissions. Santa Monica was also one of the first cities in California to introduce a solar PV requirement for new construction, and was the first city to introduce a net-zero energy building code for residential construction. In public-private partnerships, the city has worked with the West Side Energy Partnership and Southern California Edison to replace thousands of fluorescent and metal halide lamps with LEDs, saving millions of kilowatt-hours. Santa Monica is also leading water conservation and has developed policies and rebate programs to reduce water use in buildings and landscaping, introducing a water neutrality requirement which allows development to occur without increasing the amount of water used citywide. Santa Monica, thank you for your contributions to a better world for all of us. I'm pleased to introduce Jim Sayers of the International Code Council's Board of Directors for the presentation of the award.
Thank you, Greg. As Greg said, my name is Jim Sayers, the Director of the International Code Council and Board Liaison to the Sustainability Membership Council. It's always a pleasure to be able to recognize the achievements of an exceptional member of the ICC like the city of Santa Monica. On behalf of the Board of Directors and membership of the International Code Council, it is my honor to present the city of Santa Monica with the National Leadership in Sustainability Award. This award is presented in recognition of the city's significant contributions in advocacy, leadership in the development of codes and standards, programs, and public policy in the areas of energy efficiency and sustainability in the built environment. Congratulations.
Thank you to the International Code Council for acknowledging Santa Monica with the 2020 National Leadership in Sustainability Award. This recognition reflects a longstanding commitment in our community to environmental protection, economic vitality, and social equity. We are pleased to accept this award, and we look forward to our collective efforts to advance sustainable practices.
On behalf of our city council, our outstanding staff, and our sustainability-supportive residents, thank you to the International Code Council for this recognition. The city of Santa Monica is pleased to accept the 2020 ICC National Leadership in Sustainability Award. We were one of the first cities to adopt a sustainable city plan back in 1994. Last year, we augmented that with an ambitious climate action and adaptation plan, recognizing that sustainability goals have become even more urgent. Santa Monica aims for an 80% emissions reduction by 2030 and full carbon neutrality by 2050 or sooner. And we realize that goals like that require prompt and decisive action. Almost two years ago, we helped create a regional electricity provider called the Clean Power Alliance, which now delivers most of our energy from 100% clean renewable resources. Our city appreciates the work of the ICC on sustainable building codes. We passed code requirements for solar PV, EV charging, net-zero energy, water neutrality, and building electrification. We anticipate upping our electric preferred energy code to mandatory electrification by early 2022. To demonstrate that sustainable building makes economic sense, we this year completed a new city hall east designed to achieve the Living Building Challenge certification. It came in on time, under budget, and will save the city millions of dollars over its 100-year life. Again, from all of us in Santa Monica, thank you for this award. Does that conclude the presentation?
Yes, that's all.
Well, council and community, I just want to say good on you because we've all together supported these programs over the years, and if anybody wonders if we really do act as leaders with the efforts we make, I'll note that that was the International Code Council that gave us that award. So thanks to everybody who's been supportive in our efforts, and of course, if you've been watching what's happening with climate change, we're not going to stop. We can't afford to stop. To have our progress noted like that is really welcome. Council, any questions or comments on that presentation? I see none, so if we could, city clerk, we'll move on to the consent calendar.
So we have the consent calendar. All items will be considered and approved in one motion unless removed by a council member for discussion. And before we begin, there's a correction on item 3B, which is on page 32 in the online packet. There was an omission in the financial impacts and budget section of the staff report. Total contract amounts are correct, however, the account was mistakenly omitted in the table on the contract request constructed management. The account and the amount are $50,000, and the account number is C5704700.689000. And you have no callers for this item.
Well, then, there is no public hearing to be held if there are no callers, so we'll go right to the council and see if anybody wants to pull any items. If not, we'll entertain a motion for the consent calendar. Moved by everybody at once. Try it again. I couldn't tell which one of you wants a motion. Do we have a second?
Second by O'Day.
Okay. Moved by Councilmember Hara, second by Mayor Protemo O'Day, with the apparent enthusiasm of other council members as well, and we will vote all but on the consent calendar.
Councilmember McCowan.
Yes.
Councilmember Hillmerich.
Yes.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Councilmember Winter.
Yes.
Councilmember Hara.
Yes.
Mayor Protemo O'Day.
Yes.
And Mayor McHillam.
Yes, and so the consent calendar in its entirety is approved unanimously with a seven to nothing vote of the city councils, and that moves us on to tonight's ordinances.
We have item 7A, which is introduction and adoption of emergency interim ordinances extending interim zoning regulations adopted by Emergency Interim Zoning Ordinances 2636 and 2637 for economic recovery in the city's downtown mixed-use and commercial, employment, oceanfront, and public and semi-public districts. And there are no callers at this time for this item.
So we'll go to the staff presentation on this.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and city council. Tony Kim, Principal Planner, City Planning Division. Before you tonight is a staff recommendation that the council adopt few interim zoning ordinances which would extend to existing ISOs for the economic recovery of the Third Street Promenade area and the city's other commercial districts. In May of this year, council adopted these two emergency ISOs to support the economic recovery of local businesses impacted by COVID. ISO 2636 applied to the Third Street Promenade area, and ISO 2637 applied to all other commercial districts except for the Promenade area and Bergamot. These ISOs were one prong of a multi-prong effort to aid in the economic recovery of the city. The interim regulations were intended to be initial steps for relaxing and streamlining zoning and permitting requirements. They also focused on relaxing barriers that were creating difficult processes for simple changes of use and inhibiting the establishment of neighborhood-serving businesses. ISO for the Third Street Promenade area, as you can see, this area is bounded by Second Street, Broadway, Fourth Street, and Wiltshire. And the ISO introduced flexible land uses to the Third Street Promenade area. These included food halls and some light industry uses. They also eased the limitations on conversion of restaurant spaces by eliminating the need for a CUP for these types of conversions. They also eased the abandonment clause for restaurant and retail uses. They provided more flexible loading requirements for changes of use, and they also provided for more flexible alcohol exemptions. The citywide commercial ISO applied to all of the other districts besides the Promenade and Bergamot, and it also introduced flexible land uses. It allowed for more permitted restaurant uses by removing the requirement of minor use permits and conditional use permits for larger restaurant sites. It also removed the cap on the number of restaurants per block on Main Street. It also allowed for parking relief for changes of uses, and also eased the abandonment clause for restaurant and retail uses, as well as provided more flexible loading requirements for changes of use, and more flexible alcohol exemptions, although not quite as flexible as for those in the Promenade area. The ISOs became effective immediately upon adoption and were set to expire in July, but they were extended pursuant to the executive order of the Director of Emergency Services. So the ISOs are set to expire when the executive order expires. However, it's uncertain as to when that will be, so the proposed ISOs would extend the interim regulations until at least December 31st of 2022. Both of the ISOs are proposed to remain relatively unchanged. However, a modification is proposed for the Promenade area ISO, which would allow new buildings, additions, and enlargements to meet the loading requirements through submittal of parking and loading operations plans. Currently in the ISO, this is only allowed for changes of use, but this modification would then apply to new buildings and additions and enlargements as well. For the citywide ISO, the only change proposed is to allow the Santa Monica Pier to be subject to the same alcohol exemption conditions as those in the Promenade ISO. Some of these conditions include alcohol service hours from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. daily, food service from flexible sources until at least 10:00 p.m., eliminating the 35% gross revenue cap for alcohol sales, as well as continuing to allow alcohol takeout and delivery in accordance with ABC licensing. Staff would also like to note there is a typo in the citywide ISO in section 2G. That sentence in 2G should reference the Santa Monica Pier and not the Third Street Promenade area, though as you can see in the red lines here on the screen, that's the correction that would be made to the citywide ISO. And with that, staff is recommending adoption of the ISO extensions for the two current interim ISOs for the economic recovery of the Promenade and the city's other commercial districts. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Council members, what questions do we have for staff? We don't, we'll go to the public input if there is any. I see Councilmember Hillmerich.
Thank you, mayor. So I do have a question because it is very hard being in these COVID circumstances to see how these changes are performing and whether people are happy with their performance. We do get mail, but I'm guessing you get more, and I'd like to know what the feedback has been on these changes.
Yeah, the feedback that we've heard, I believe, has been overwhelmingly positive. You are right, it is hard to kind of get a sense of how these new changes in the ISO are working. It's only been five or six months since the adoption of these regulations, so it's hard to quantify what we've seen, but in terms of speaking with applicants, speaking to the public, businesses that are looking to reopen or open in the city, we are definitely getting positive feedback on these changes, especially with some of the eases in the parking regulations and the alcohol regulations. So I believe it's been overwhelmingly positive. We've had a few comments for alcohol exemptions that have been approved where the neighbors have not been happy with those approvals, but we have not received any actual complaints from any of these operations. So yeah, for now, I think, you know, these have been positive steps to assist the public.
Just on a follow-up on the last thing you said, so people complained about the alcohol permits being issued, but there haven't been complaints about the actual operation under the new alcohol permits. Is that correct?
That is correct, and there haven't been many complaints either to any of these approved alcohol exemptions.
Thank you.
Sure. Mayor, you're muted.
Councilmember Hara, I'm not sure whether I saw you raise your hand or just bending your elbow.
Actually, I just wanted to follow up on Councilmember Hillmerich's question in regards how many complaints we've received, and you said that you haven't had that many. Would you know the number of them by any chance?
Well, there have been no official complaints filed with our code enforcement division. We have received some feedback from neighbors to maybe two or three of the approved alcohol exemptions indicating that they have some concerns with what may occur with those approvals, but there have been no actual complaints filed with code enforcement.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question if nobody else does. When we first did this, Mr. Kim, back, I think you said May, frankly, none of us had any idea how long the coronavirus emergency would continue, or how deep or how long the economic collapse and hopefully quickly coming economic recovery were going to be. quickly coming economic recovery were going to be. So in extending these, what is staff's thinking on the timeframe? We're looking here at people making investments in their businesses, so obviously we want to give them an opportunity to recoup that investment. Is the extension of this ISO then commensurate with what our thinking currently is on economic recovery for our city?
I believe it's somewhat in line. It is hard to kind of look into the future and estimate how long that recovery will take. I believe the proposed extension date that we've put forth through the end of two thousand and twenty-two would provide some opportunity, additional opportunity for these businesses, but also give us the opportunity, if needed, to further extend it. But at least we can kind of get a check-in by the end of two thousand and twenty-two, see how things are working.
Councilmember, I can also address that, I'm sorry, Mayor McKeown, I can also address that simply by saying we do not expect full economic recovery by the end of two thousand and twenty-two nationally. We think it will take longer than that. Nonetheless, believe this is an appropriate timeframe because we certainly will know more about the trajectory of economic recovery. As I've said many times, we build up from here, and it's just a question of how quickly. We do not expect full economic recovery nationally by the end of two thousand and twenty-two, but we should be well on our way in that recovery. And in that sense, I think this is an appropriate timeline to allow businesses to invest, but also for us to see the impacts of that on our residents and on our neighborhoods. So that is the frame in which we're operating.
A couple of council. Sorry, who's that?
Mayor, that was still me to say full economic recovery. We look at some.
Mr., your audio is cutting in and out, which may be part of why I spoke over you. I'm sorry.
No problem.
What did you said? You may need to leave.
Full economic recovery more like two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-five.
Okay, thank you. So a couple of council members mentioned concerns we had heard from residents. Let's open the public hearing and see what concerns there may be. Do we have any callers at this point?
There are two callers.
Let's bring them into the meeting.
Transferring Denise Barton.
Denise Barton, welcome to the meeting. Your time starts now.
Good evening. Considering your let's serve alcohol everywhere attitude, I'd be interested in seeing what businesses sell alcohol per block within the city. Yet you sit there and proclaim your vision zero for pedestrians and people riding bicycles. Here my question would be, if the people are harming others due to driving while intoxicated, are you promoting this action with this order, which says to me you care more about the city's tax dollars from alcohol sales over people's lives and well-being? And I have to ask, if restaurants stop serving food at ten PM but are allowed to continue serving alcohol until midnight, aren't they being allowed to operate as a bar for those additional two hours? Then on the promenade, it's an additional four hours until two AM. Then as a resident downtown, I can't believe any of this is being done to keep residents safe from COVID-nineteen. Due to super-spreader zones being created with outdoor dining, with people not wearing masks, being not more than six feet apart with the sidewalk in between on the west side of the thirteen-hundred block of Second Street. Not to mention the numerous people queuing in lines for tables, takeout, and delivery, people waiting on those sidewalks, which also results in many people parking illegally. And what does the Coastal Commission say about you taking away so much beach parking? Or the tables with people not wearing masks right outside of my building's front door on that same block of Second Street? I also have to take issue with the cleaning of the outdoor dining areas. For example, Hi-Ho Cheeseburger thinks it's acceptable to sweep the leaves and trash to a location like in between a planner and the curbside, where it's been for two days now, in addition to not sweeping the leaves around the outside, making it look trashy. So now this is how downtown Santa Monica Inc. takes taxes property downtown for these quality of services. So again, by this action, you want downtown Santa Monica to be trashy as well as unsafe for residents due to COVID-nineteen. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we have one other call, did we not?
We did. Agents, is there another call that you're transferring in? Yeah, they're transferring them in now.
Thank you.
We actually don't. That was the last caller on this item. The other one was for a different item.
Okay, with that clarification, then, we'll close the public hearing on item seven A and bring it back before the council for questions, or if there are no further questions for discussion. Councilmember Winter.
I will move this staff recommendation to adopt these two interim zoning ordinances.
Second, Himmrich.
With a motion by Councilmember Winter, seconded by Councilmember Himmrich, is there further discussion on this item by the council? I see none, so would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember McCowen.
Yes.
Councilmember Himmrich.
Yes.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Councilmember Winter.
Yes.
Councilmember Hara.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim O'Day.
Yes.
And Mayor McKeown.
So the staff recommendation on item seven A is adopted by unanimous vote of the city council, seven to nothing, and that will move us on to item seven B.
Mayor, before we move to before we move to seven B, sorry, we just found out that on the consent calendar, we did have callers because the queue was open late. So I'm going to ask that the council reopen the consent and revote after you hear the public hearing.
So council, I think, a motion to reopen the consent calendar, which we can do because you're still in the same meeting.
Second, Councilmember.
I think that was moved by Councilmember Davis and seconded by Councilmember Himmrich. Am I getting the audio right? Close enough? You're muted.
Just second.
I'm sorry, you're very garbled, so. Good thing you identified him herself. Who made the motion?
I did. Glenn made the motion, and Councilmember Hara did the seconding.
Okay, so motion by Davis, seconded by Hara to reopen the consent calendar. See no discussion? All in favor? Oh, we have to do a roll call, vote on teleconference. It will matter, we have to do a roll call.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tim O'Day.
Yes.
Councilmember Hara.
Yes.
Councilmember Winter.
Yes.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Councilmember Himmrich.
Yes.
Councilmember McCowen.
Yes.
And Mayor McKeown.
Yes, so the procedural motion passes unanimously. Just for clarification, we were indeed done with item seven A. What we're now doing is we're going back to the consent calendar, the three items, and reopening that because we found out that there were callers who were not able to get through in a timely way, and we will hear them now. Clerk, would you recall item three, and then we'll open the public hearing immediately?
Yes, so it's the consent calendar, and all items will be considered and approved on one motion unless removed by a council member for discussion, and we have three callers for this.
And we'll open the public hearing and hear those callers.
Transferring Olga Uroska.
Olga Uroska, welcome to the meeting. Your time starts now.
I'm speaking to three A. San Michelle is a dilapidated tent on city-owned land that was supposed to serve as a temporary homeless shelter for six months. Twenty-six years later, it is still here, warehousing homeless people, sometimes for years, and apparently the city of Santa Monica has no problem with that. In the past fifteen years, the People Concern has been operating the shelter. The organization failed to maintain it and do the necessary repairs as mandated by the lease agreement with the city. City staff, who is supposed to monitor the performance of the People Concern, has not noticed in fifteen years that disrepair, filth, and lack of accessibility for people with disabilities at San Michelle. The council didn't notice either. In fact, the council appears to be in violation of the municipal code, which mandates that the council shall annually review the homeless services providers and commission an audit if necessary. Similarly, the Social Services Commission is mandated by the municipal code to perform an annual review and produce an annual report for the council of the social service programs. The commission has failed to do so in at least a decade now, all of this while the city claims that addressing homelessness is one of its priorities. The lack of accountability in homeless services, as evidenced by the case of San Michelle, is indicative of the overall mismanagement of the city and the council's disconnect from the needs of the community. Such mismanagement and disconnect are the reasons why three city council incumbents were fired in the recent election. I'm looking forward to a new council, new city manager, new human services staff, and a new homeless services provider in Santa Monica in two thousand and twenty-one. The People Concern can no longer be entrusted with running or improving San Michelle if eighteen months after obtaining the public funds, the organization hasn't even started rehabbing the tent. Thank you and good night.
Thank you.
Transferring Philip Radko.
Philip Radko, welcome to the meeting. Your time starts now.
Hi, thank you so much. Good evening, council. My name is Philip Radko, and I work in the city of Santa Monica, and I'm active in the community. First off, I'd like to say thank you, council, for all that you do, and to the rest of the city employees that work hard for the city navigating us through the pandemic in trying times. I'm calling a reference to the minutes on the agenda tonight for meetings April sixth, April eighteenth, and October twenty-seventh, and ask, why not September eighth? We still need to continue the dialogue of police budget reform. As hard as it was to understand what the council's action was, including in the motion on nine-eight, in direction for city staff to regroup with committee on reporting of the budget and the committee to further explore this topic and come back with recommendations. That's the Public Safety Reform Action Committee I'm referencing as committee. That was clear in that meeting, and the fact of the matter is that the members of the committee have not been called. There hasn't been another meeting since September. No regroup or no action taken beyond talking about the police reform. The city manager hasn't called a follow-up meeting date. There's nothing on the calendar, and we're going on two months now. This is clear. That's a demonstration of the city's priorities and values. Not only not following through on police budget reform, we also can't get minutes on the council speaking about it. You know, as we see in the election this past week and the current climate we're in in the city of LA, and for example, how Jackie Lacy has voted out. San Monica voters have influence in this. We're part of Los Angeles. Santa Monica is talking, not walking the walk, and not typing and uploading the minutes for the public. It's hard to understand what the council's actions were in the motion and direction for city staff to regroup with the committee on reporting of the budget and the committee to explore this further topic and come back with recommendations. That was much clearer. In fact, in the matter, the members of the committee have not been called. There has not been another meeting.
Thank you. Your time is now up.
Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Transferring Thomas Madrino.
Thomas Madrino, welcome to the meeting. Your time starts now.
My name is Tom Madrino, and I worked in the city of Santa Monica for many years, and I am a strong supporter of Santa Monica for Democracy. Especially in these terms of COVID, I appreciate the work the city clerk has done in completing the minutes for April sixth, eighteenth, and October twenty-seventh. As you know, it's imperative to be able to review minutes of meetings to evaluate if actions that were promised are being acted on. I would like to be able to review the minutes from the city council meeting on September eighth. There was language used which was unclear and difficult to follow regarding the motion on the budget process. Due to the minutes not being available, I am personally finding it difficult to understand what action was voted on regarding police budget reform that voters in Santa Monica are so clearly demanding. As a person of color, police budget reform is an issue that is very important to me, and I am not alone. This is an era where the will of the people for change is forefront in the narrative of the country, and this should not be kicked down the road any longer. In LA County, for instance, the district attorney, a longtime incumbent and woman of color, was voted out of office because the status quo is no longer acceptable in the criminal justice system. Progress such as this matters and shows the values of our community. When thoughtful change is planned and then executed, then other cities can look to Santa Monica as an example of what they can strive to be. I would like to see the minutes from September eighth for clarity, and I look forward to seeing a revisit of police budget reform by the authors of the report and the city to hear further recommendations and then have the next.
Thank you.
So before we close the public hearing, let's just, again, double-check. We heard the three people you told us about. Are there any other callers who might be waiting to speak on the consent calendar?
I believe we have, I believe we do have one more caller.
Let's bring that caller in.
Transferring Bert Champagne.
Bert Champagne, welcome to the meeting. Your time starts now.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Bert Champagne, and I would like to thank you for allowing me to speak. I am a strong supporter of Santa Monica for Democracy. I'm calling about an item in the consent calendar. The item is the minutes of April sixth, April eighteenth, and October twenty-seventh. Thank you to the city clerk's office for all the work they're doing, especially during this COVID-nineteen crisis, but we are still missing the minutes from the September eighth meeting. This is a meeting in which you all discussed police budget reform. It was a very important meeting to us in the community. Nothing has been acted on this. We are still waiting for the report. We had a meeting, another follow-up meeting, where we came up with great ideas from the Police Budget Reform Committee, and none of them have transpired into anything that we can talk about. Right now is the time for sufficient change. Look what happened to long-term District Attorney Jackie Lacy. The status quo is no longer the norm. Here in Santa Monica, we talked the talk about police budget reform. Now let's walk the walk. Please be the leader in charge. The county, the state, and the city is all looking to you for making that change. Please be the people that we put in office. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so now it's a triple-check. Is there anybody left on the phone line?
There are two more.
Let's go ahead.
Transferring Xena Joseph.
Xena Joseph, welcome to the meeting. Your time starts now.
Thank you. Regarding item three A, two points. Number one, while not understanding why it's taken a year and a half since the council approved six hundred and ninety thousand dollars in funding for the San Michelle renovation, I'm happy to see that the project is finally going forward. With rain, high winds, and temperatures dipping into the forties lately, I'm sure that living conditions in the temporary cement slab floor windowless tent have been even more uncomfortable than usual. If council members have never toured San Michelle, I strongly urge you to do so, as I have, especially when temperatures are either higher or lower than normal. Point two, as city revenues increase, I hope that the plan, which is currently on hold along with many other CIP projects, to build a permanent structure to replace the temporary twenty-five-year-old San Michelle tent will be given high priority by the council. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Transferring Michael Lewis.
Michael Lewis, welcome to the meeting. Your time starts now.
Hello, this is Agenda Item Three A. I'm Michael Lewis. Santa Monica citizens expect their city council and their flagship homeless service provider, OPCC, to do the right thing to prevent or reduce preventable hardship, harm, suffering, and death. The city council in past incarnations have failed to prevent OPCC's human rights abuses and atrocities, whether at San Michelle or other temporary housing facilities it operates. The council's public record is inundated with credible testimony from clients who have been harmed there. Citizens expect timely action when inhumane conditions for our most vulnerable arrive. They expect the city council to not turn their heads away for twenty-six years in wilful ignorance out of political convenience or favoritism. OPCC, with its atrocious civil and human rights record, along with allowing San Michelle to fall into such disrepair, endangering its residents in two thousand and five, should not be awarded its historical or its historical maltreatment of its residents. This is the only homeless service shelter on city land. It must not be operated by the People Concern anymore. Allowing this is an endorsement. Allowing this is an endorsement of future human rights violations. This is true whether it involves OPCC failing to report future unsafe conditions at San Michelle facility itself or the continuation of its current corrupt prison guard-like culture inside. The San Michelle emergency tent was built in 1994 and was intended to be a temporary shelter for six months only. It is still there 26 laters because this body over the past 26 years and OPCC since 2005 simply did not care. The city council chose to not believe and act on a flood of credible grievances from clients, former clients, and advocates. We warmly welcome the three city, new city council members. We look forward to their contribution to establishing real oversight and accountability with regards to OPCC along with building the new permanent San Michelle structure. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm told we have four more callers on this item.
Let me, let me ask the city clerk. Normally, there's a point at which the queue is closed and calls after that point are considered late chips. How are we handling that on this item we're revisiting where people seem to be calling in again after the staff presentation is long over?
At this point, Mayor, we don't know, we don't know when people called in, when people, who was on hold already. I only knew that there were three callers and I knew that Xena was not able to get in. So it's up to the council if you want to consider these last two calls as late, then you can take the vote to give them one minute instead of two.
Well, look, these, I thought that you said there were four people waiting. And if so, they called in before we discussed this, so I think it'd be fair to hear them as regular chips. But if staff could mark this point in the queue and when we're done with the four callers, then I'll ask the council if we want to.
The queue is, according to what I know, the queue is closed now.
Okay, four callers. Is that correct?
That's what I was told, told. I'll get clarification between this next caller and the one after that.
Let us hear those four calls.
Okay.
You're transferring Meredith Kuntz.
Meredith Kuntz, welcome to the meeting. Your time starts now.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for listening thoughtfully to these comments. My name is Meredith Kuntz and I'm a researcher and organizer with Santa Monica for Democracy. First, I'd like to commend all the city employees for their hard work throughout the pandemic. I'm calling in today regarding the April 6th and 18th city council minutes as well as the October 27th city council minutes. All these minutes are no doubt important and I thank the city clerk for her work in making these available. I also find it disheartening that we still have not received the minutes for the critical September 8th city council meeting. During that meeting, the council voted on a very wordy and confusing directive regarding taking the first steps to police budget reform. Without written documentation available to the public, I worry that directive will be lost or ignored. With everything the city has gone through within the last year, I feel it's imperative that with, that any new incoming city official have access to everything the previous council has voted on or discussed. Without those minutes, we lack accountability and it will be hard for new officials to get the full picture and move forward onto the important and long overdue measure of police budget reform. I ask that the minutes from September 8th be available and the directive given to the city manager regarding police budget reform be followed. Thank you for your time. Good night.
Thank you. We do have one, two, looks like three, no, two more callers, sorry.
You're transferring Denise Barton.
Denise Barton, welcome to the meeting. Your time starts now.
Good evening. On item 3A, I have to question, are the 20 people from San Michelle the only people being served by the county's motel program, Project Room Key, in Santa Monica? I ask only because I see so many people sleeping on the streets, even in the recent mid-40-degree weather at night. I also thought the city was going to build affordable housing where parking structure three is on Fourth Street while San Michelle was being refurbished, so I find it very interesting that you are trying to get it paid for due to COVID-19. But what am I saying? The people concerned formerly OPCC is as manipulative financially as you are, which can actually also be seen in item 3C for on-call signage and striping, another action by the city to reduce work public work employees have to do. Where at the bottom of the summary of the staff report on page one it states, "This will increase budget authority, but the city will not encumber funds until a project and funding source is identified." In other words, the city doesn't have enough money to cover the additional $250,000, considering the initial cost was lowballed or underestimated to gain the contract. And with this item, you are indebted to the city to the new three-quarters of a million dollars for the next five years, leaving one to, leaving one to wonder, who of you, Superior Pavement Marketing Incorporated, is making campaign contributions to? Thank you.
Thank you. And this is our final caller.
You're transferring David Morris.
David Morris, welcome to the meeting. Your time starts now.
Thank you. Good evening, Council. As in the past, I spoke before you concerning issues of San Michelle where I resided for over two years and a half, at two different times, when they never were able to house me or take care of my issues for my health. I was in the respiratory program. The problem we have now is you have agreed a year and three-quarters ago to do this five-year plan to build a new building for the homeless and to bring the homeless services in Santa Monica up to the 21st century standards. The archaic standards which exist now at San Michelle are unacceptable and the maintenance man who works at San Michelle told me that the construction work that you guys plan to do there is just putting lipstick on a pig, to be blunt about it. I do not understand why you claim that homelessness and helping the homeless is one of the key issues second to COVID-19, but you cannot put this issue forward every time you agree to do something, you backpedal. It's time that you built this building and gave people a decent place and actually turned over the social services to a new organization. Once I was removed from San Michelle, a year, almost a year and a half ago, I went to PATH in Los Angeles. They have built buildings much better than what you had proposed originally. They have three of them in one location. The staff is excellent. They have 24-hour security. They have chefs that cook the food three times a day on the premises, not something that shipped in from downtown that San Michelle and OPCC directs to have done. And this is real services where the people feel comfortable that they can rebuild their lives. There is no such place here in Santa Monica like this. I suggest that you get with the people at PATH, find out what they're doing right.
Thank you, your time is now up.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. And that was our final caller on this item.
So that'll close the public hearing on the revisited consent calendar and brings it back to the council, either for someone to pull an item or make a motion to adopt the consent calendar.
I move we adopt the consent calendar. By Himmelrich.
All right, so it's moved by Councilmember Davis and seconded by Councilmember Himmelrich. I do not see any discussion requested, so will the clerk please call the roll on the consent calendar?
Councilmember McCowen.
Yes.
Councilmember Himmelrich.
Yes.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Councilmember Winter.
Yes.
Councilmember Hara.
Yes.
Mayor Protimogey.
Yes.
And Mayor McHill.
Yes. So the revisited consent calendar passes again by unanimous vote of the city council, seven to nothing. And with apologies to the Monsignor for having put him in limbo while we did that, let's go to 7B.
Item 7B is introduction for first reading of an ordinance to amend and restate the Development Agreement for St. Monica's Catholic Community, and we have four callers for this item.
The staff presentation, I assume.
Yes, good evening. Mayor and Council, my name is Grace Page, Senior Planner in the City Planning Division, and I'll provide you with the presentation of the ordinance pertaining to the Development Agreement Amendment. I'd like to provide you with a brief background for council as well as viewers.
Who's this?
A decade ago, in 2010, council approved the Development Agreement with St. Monica's that allowed guaranteed development rights with an extended timeframe for the following: construction of the 27,500-square-foot community center. It also has 154 subterranean parking spaces. It also involved renovation of many of the existing facilities on the campus as well as construction of a 7,700-square-foot addition to the high school. In the upper right-hand corner is a picture of the St. Monica Community Center which was completed in 2013. Now, the request for that extended construction timeframe was in response to the uniqueness of the constraints that St. Monica has with fundraising for those types of improvements as well as trying to coordinate construction to least impact the school schedule of the two schools that they operate on the campus. So in the image on this slide, outlined in yellow is the campus. It's bounded by Washington Avenue to the north, Lincoln to the east, California to the south, and Seventh Street to the west. Also, outlined in red is a 7,500-square-foot lot that consists of 26 parking spaces. It's a surface parking lot that is owned by St. Monica's and is incorporated as part of the Development Public, Development Agreement Public Benefits. The public benefits that were offered in the DA is to have a transportation demand management plan for the campus. There was also an agreement that allowed for neighborhood use of 15 parking spaces, 15 of the 26 parking spaces at the Seventh Street parking lot. Also, the community, the new community, the community center building has availability of meeting spaces for both nonprofits, city departments, and community groups. And lastly, the public use of the bookstore and cafe that is there in California known as Holy Grumps. This is an image of the surface parking lot on Seventh Street. It's located in the R2 zone and there are 26 spaces and again 15 are shared with the neighborhood. Now, with the completion of the community center and its subterranean garage, St. Monica's no longer has a need for this overflow parking lot and is requesting an amendment that would allow some flexibility with the future of this parking lot. The requested amendment is basically to allow for augmented the community benefits that would allow the potential removal of the shared parking lot, and this may also be to facilitate the, the sale of the parcel. So in exchange, there are expanded hours for community meeting reservations. There are also added, an added event space, the South Auditorium on the campus. The applicant is also looking to making improvements to the meeting reservation system, so like a real-time calendar, an easy way to navigate their website for bookings for those that might want to use those community spaces. Additionally, an enhanced TDM plan is also being proposed for pickup and drop-off of the students and really focused on trying to minimize any impact to the immediate neighborhood. The applicant is also offering to allow for public parking in the city, for city-sponsored park and playhouse events, and that would be within the garage up to 40 spaces up to 10 times a year. Now, the flexibility that's related to the Seventh Street parking, parking lot is related to requiring that the future use of this parcel be limited to multi-residential development. And in the event that that parking lot would be sold, it would have to be developed as residential. Also, the applicant is willing to go ahead and share the parking, continue the shared parking use until a planning entitlement for such multi-residential development is The planning commission did hear this request of November of 2019 and made the following recommendation. They wanted to make sure that there was clear information about availability and rates for those meeting spaces that are offered, to establish a reasonable fee for the usage of the event space of the South Auditorium, and asked the applicant to consider sharing the parking spaces available on the campus, 15 spaces especially for the seniors. And also to improve the TDM program and to restrict the Seventh Street property to multi-unit residential use. Now, all of these suggestions or recommendations have been addressed with the exception of the consideration of the 15 shared uses on the St. Monica campus. The applicant has expressed concern related to securing the facility, the parking facility in the evening as well as shared use of any parking spaces on the campus as it relates to operations with the school as well. And with that, staff recommends that the city council introduce for first reading an ordinance to amend and restate the St. Monica Catholic Community Development Agreement. And with that, that concludes my presentation and I can answer any questions that you have at this time.
And council, it's your turn. Who has a question? I do not see any questions at this point, so let's open the public hearing on this pattern. How many calls do we have at this point?
I have five callers.
Well, let us hear them.
You're transferring Matt Neko.
Matt Neko, welcome to the meeting. Your time starts now.
Thank you. I didn't expect to be connected so quickly. First of all, I'd like to note, Ted, you were a part of the planning commission at the time in 2010 when this was considered and you fully well know that the parking spaces are not just because of overflow, but it was a trade-off for the community to have parking spaces. So there should be continuation of parking spaces indefinitely. Second of all, this is a pattern that happens where there are concessions that are made in the beginning for developments and then the city council approves of modifications of them later down the line. And that's, it's been a horrible precedent for the city to do that and for us to continue to do that is horrible. I also want to note that I, I'm fully supportive of St. Monica's and its purposes and its missions. So it has nothing at all, what I'm speaking of has nothing at all to do with the character of St. Monica's or the fact that it is a religious institution, except for the fact that the sale of the land will probably be a tax-free sale. We just, I think, passed Measure SM to increase the tax basis on transfers of land, which if this now occurs for a transfer of land, will not be a taxable benefit for the city. The next thing is that although these are residential units, it doesn't specify that these are affordable residential units, doesn't specify that these are low-income residential units, and so I think that that's something that has to come into consideration as well. The 10 uses a year for things like Miles Playhouse, a run at Miles Playhouse is over 10 days, generally speaking. So the 10 uses a year.
Thank you, your time is now up.
Oh, thank you, Denise.
Mayor, before, Mayor, before we go any further, Jane just let me know that the applicant did not get their time to speak and that they should have gone first.
The way this is put on the agenda, it's merely an ordinance to amend something. My agenda does not show an.
Yeah, mine either.
Presentation. So maybe we need to turn to the interim city attorney.
Okay.
See if that is necessary and or appropriate on this particular item. It's not an appeal, so.
Are you there, George?
Yes, I am. I am here. It is not an appeal. It is on just as a ordinance to amend and restate the Development Agreement. However, it is at the request of St. Monica's, so if the council wishes to give them time to be heard, you may, but it's not on as an appeal.
Okay.
Well, so.
So let's just pretend.
Do we have to have that or not?
Um.
optionally, yeah.
My suggestion would be that since this is an application by them to amend the Development Agreement, that it would make sense to have the applicant have some time to speak.
So they will get. So, they will get 10 minutes, but there's nobody who'll get a 10 minutes in opposition to speak, because there is no opposition on this, right?
As far as I know, no.
No.
So, council, what is your wish? Do we want to make a motion to hear for 10 minutes from St. Monica's Church?
I move to hear for 10 minutes.
I second.
Motion from Himmelrich and a second by Councilmember Hara to give St. Monica's Church 10 minutes for a presentation. I don't see any hands in discussion, so it's called the world, please.
Councilmember Hara.
Yes.
Councilmember Winter.
Yes.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Councilmember Himmelrich.
Yes.
Councilmember McCollum.
Yes.
Mayor Potem O'Day.
Yes.
And Mayor McHill.
Yes. So, that presentation has been approved by the council by a seven-to-nothing unanimous vote, and I'd suggest we, we hear it right now, so the remaining members of the public who wish to comment can comment on the presentation as well as the staff presentation. So, let's welcome in St. Monica's Church.
Thank you, mayor, and thanks to the City Council. We appreciate very much the opportunity to speak. I, I don't think we're going to take 10 minutes, so we'll be as brief as we can. I'd just like to thank you, and the city staff are working hard with us to get this accomplished tonight, to bring it to the City Council, so very grateful for that and grateful the time that you've given to us. I think it's a mutual benefit to have this passed. The, by the way, my name is Lloyd Torgeson, and I'm pastor at St. Monica's. Excuse me, I didn't, I didn't introduce myself. I, I think it's a mutual benefit for this to, to pass the amendment to the development agreement, certainly for our parish financially, but I think for the city, because housing is a critical issue at this moment, and also for the fact that we are going to give support and care to the use of our, of the city and other members to use our facilities as they have, and we want to continue to do that, and we hope that that will be an opportunity to support the work of the city and those who are around it. So, I hope that this is a great opportunity for us to at least take a moment to share our concern and to thank you for this opportunity to speak. So, I'm going to ask Tom Zanuck now to come forward and to make a small presentation.
Good evening, members of the council and fellow citizens. Go within the 10 minutes. My name is Tom Zanuck. I'm a parishioner and a resident of the city. As a volunteer, I serve as chair of the master site planning committee for St. Monica's and have worked with your staff during the entire application process. We appreciate their time, they spent on the requests, and their diligent work to bring this before you. We know they have a lot on their plate, particularly now, and we appreciate it. We are in agreement with the amended development agreement, as staff has presented it to you with the additional public benefits. This application will allow the transition of a surface parking lot to become housing, consistent with the city's general plan, consistent with zoning, and consistent with city's policies promoting housing opportunities. As a former city planner, multifamily housing on this site is both appropriate and logical, half a block from Wilshire and across the street from Emerson Reed Park. As staff said, the approval of this application will also bring new public benefits that do not exist today, and one of the things your staff was really clear on was, we're trading public benefits, and if we remove parking, something else has to happen. So, by expanding the use of meeting facilities on the campus, which have been terrifically used in the last 10 years, also including auditorium space for both community groups and for the city, and new underground, use of our underground parking for events at Emerson Reed Park. And I might say, when we were drafting this with city staff, we were checking with our staff at the church, and we found out from time to time, we've already been allowing some parking because city staff has called, and I think it's an example of how the people of this community work together. But now, we're going to memorialize this and add new requirements to it. And as staff said, until the time of sale of this parking lot, which may not be for several years, it remains as parking and the 15 spaces available to the public. And I'll point out that as of today, we do lease two spaces for overnight parking to people in the area. This concludes our presentation, and if possible, Mr. Mayor, we'd like to reserve an opportunity for any rebuttal at the end, if that's appropriate. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. I'm not sure, since that wasn't a presentation, I'm ill, I'm not sure that a rebuttal is is part of the format here, but let me turn to the council before you leave and just see if there are any questions for the applicant. Councilmember Winter, and then I'd like to hear the city attorney on the rebuttal question.
So, I'm just wondering if St. Monica's would have a problem if we added a condition that when the property does go for sale, that it first be offered to affordable housing developers at fair market value? I watch if you get the return on the land that you deserve, but I'd like an affordable housing developer to have first shot at it.
The fellow I respond, Mr. Mayor? Am I on?
Mayor, you're muted.
I have two microphone buttons. They're now both black. If I'm not on now, I don't know what else to do. Can you hear me?
Yes.
The answer to your question, sir, was, that's why we're asking questions. Yes, please respond.
Okay. To, to the question, we are very open to negotiating with anyone on the sale of the property, as long as the use is within the city zoning and the city general plan. We would love for that to go to a developer who does affordable housing, and in fact, many of you know my, my wife, that was her career work and still works on that in the city, and as long as that brings us to fair market price, we are certainly open to it.
Great. That's great to hear. Thank you.
Any other questions to the council? I do not see any. So, thank you very much for the presentation. Let me ask the interim city attorney, that this isn't an appeal, is a rebuttal also appropriate?
I don't believe you need to give rebuttal. This isn't an appeal, so there's no one opposing it, so you, they've had an opportunity to present, and you know, you've had the opportunity to ask questions, so I don't think there's a requirement for rebuttal.
Okay, then we'll return to the public generally and resume the public hearing on item 7B. Bring those callers in, please.
Transferring David Woodbury.
David Woodbury, welcome to the meeting. Your time starts now.
Great. That's great to hear. Thank you.
Do you have any questions to the council? I do not see any.
Mr. Woodbury, you're in the meeting. Your time starts now. Turn, turn down your computer. There's, there's a delay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Tell me when to start, please.
You're in. Go for it.
Hello, mayor in Santa Monica City Council. My name is David Woodbury, and I've lived in Santa Monica for 32 years. Also, I've been an active parishioner at St. Monica for 32 years. I'm a homeowner in our city, a business owner, and on the board for the Santa Monica Chamber of Commerce. I'm speaking in favor of the St. Monica request to lift the parking requirement on the church's Seventh Street property to enable the sale of the property at a future date. I'm in favor of St. Monica's request. I support this application to enable St. Monica Parish community to continue to serve our great city and the more than 100 ministries at our parish, enabling us to continue our service in our community. Having more housing will greatly benefit our city over having more parking spaces. St. Monica's is my spiritual home, and I believe in our parish community, Monsignor Torgeson, and the great staff and parishioners of our church. Thank you for your time.
Transferring Imma Vargas.
Imma Vargas, welcome to the meeting. Your time starts now.
Can you hear me?
We can. You're in the meeting. Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. My name is Irma Vargas. I'm a resident of Santa Monica. I have been a lifelong resident of Santa Monica, and I'm also a member of the Santa Monica Catholic Church community. I'm speaking in behalf of the reinstatement of the application for the Seventh Street property. I think, as mentioned by Monsignor Endos spoke before me, this property was initially a R2 zoning, and the best, best use probably is for housing. Housing is a need, and the benefits to the community as well as to St. Monica's would be mutually beneficial, so I'm in support of this, and I hope you take that into consideration. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Transferring Stephen Carrier.
Stephen Carrier, welcome to the meeting. Your time starts now.
Good evening. This is Stephen Carrier. My address is 601 California Avenue, Harbor 207, Santa Monica, which is very close to St. Monica's and very close to the property in question. I am speaking in favor of St. Monica's. I support this request because it will help them continue their service to the community in addition to the spiritual formation of a very large community. We have tapestries of ministries and services that go far beyond the campus. They include outreach to the homeless, outreach to the elderly and the homebound, outreach to COVID crisis, our high school, elementary school academics, and their after-school programs, in addition to sports programs, theater, music, arts, retreats, financial aid to low-income students. St. Monica's has supported my family for many, many years. I've been a parishioner since the 70s, and this relief will be, you know, help in the budget that will help the community of St. Monica's in the trying days under COVID pandemic. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Transferring Ed Snyder.
Ed Snyder, welcome to the meeting. Your time starts now.
Thank you, and good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Ed Snyder. I'm calling in favor of the St. Monica's application to amend the permit for the property located on Seventh Street. I, I think parking is certainly in need in Santa Monica, but I think there's a greater need for housing, and as Councilmember Winter suggested, affordable housing. And so, hopefully, at the appropriate time when St. Monica's does put it on the market, Suter can, can accommodate your request and put in affordable housing. Given its proximity to Wilshire and the train, there's public transportation available in hopes that maybe one or more of the residents of that building will not use vehicles and, and add further congestion to our streets with automobiles. You know, and just speaking on behalf of St. Monica, they've always been such a great community member, serving those who are in need. And, you know, it's, both of my boys have gone to the elementary and middle schools there, and about 25 years ago, or, no, nearly 20 years ago, Monsignor prepared my wife and I for marriage, so I have a close ties to Santa Monica. I've lived here for over 25 years, and I think it'd be a, a, a great task to move forward if we could allow St. Monica's to sell the property at the right time for multifamily or for multi-unit dwellings. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Transferring Dr. Mike Gruney.
Dr. Mike Gruney, welcome to the meeting. Your time starts now.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council members. Mike Gruney, 21-year resident and 31-year parishioner of St. Monica. I would urge you to adopt staff's recommendation and allow St. Monica to sell this property for multifamily housing at a fair market price. It's a win-win situation. There's always been a symbiotic relationship between St. Monica and the city of Santa Monica. St. Monica, as you know, does God's work, whether it's St. Joseph Center, feeding over 1,000 homeless people each year. I would urge you to allow Monsignor to continue to do God's work and to give us the resources to do that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Transferring anonymous resident.
Anonymous resident, welcome to the meeting. Your time starts now.
Thank you. Query on the distinction between affordable housing and low-income housing and Section 8 housing, and the postulation of selling the property at, quote, "fair market price." Fair market price will be higher for a parcel of land that could be utilized and developed for luxury housing. Fair market price will not be as high for affordable housing or low-income housing or Section 8 housing. And I would like for there to be a commitment from St. Monica's for affordable housing and low-income housing only. And other than that, because we're losing the tax benefit of the sale and the transaction because it's a religious institution, at least on the first term. Of course, in subsequent sales, we will gain on, on tax, which cuts against the argument for low income and affordable housing. However, because affordable housing and low-income housing is so needed, desperately needed in this city, I believe that the city should insist upon affordable housing and low-income housing regardless of the fair market price that could be gained for the sale, the tax-free sale of this parcel of property. Thank you for considering my comments.
Thank you. And that was our final caller on this item.
I'll pause just a moment so we can double-check and make sure that was the last call, but if it was, and it appears it was.
It was.
I'm sorry, is there one more?
No, that was the last call.
Last call. It's the last call. So, okay, that closes the public hearing on item 7B and brings the matter back before the council. Councilmember Winter.
Well, as everyone can probably glean from my question to the applicant, interested in pursuing the notion of giving, you know, exclusive window to affordable housing developers when this property does go on the market, I'm wondering, you know, we don't have Mr. Eagle here, or anyone who has a lot of experience in affordable housing development, what seems like, anybody in staff have an idea what an acceptable window would be? Maybe 90 days would work for, you know, the period for which it should be offered only to affordable housing developers? Anyone in staff have any thoughts about that?
City Attorney Dill, I mean, City Manager Dill, do you have somebody who can speak to that, or would you care to?
I was just looking to see what the Surplus Land Act timeframe would be. Jane, do you want to? I see you stepping in here.
Oh, no, sorry. I was.
I can check on that. I believe 90 days would be more than it's, more than is required under the Surplus Lands Act, but I can check that. Give me, if you can give me one second to actually pull up the statute.
So, from understanding your thinking there, Councilmember Winter, you're proposing that we approve the staff recommendation with the addition of a mandatory 90-day window during which the property would have to be offered to a 100% affordable housing developer?
Yes, and as I said, at fair market value, I mean.
Well, that's, that's how 100% affordable housing developers.
That's what they, that's what they pay for land in any, in any other circumstances, right? They're bidding against market-rate developers, so I don't think that it's, we could require the applicant to cut them a deal in these circumstances. I also want to point out while we're here, you know, the one, one caller said that, you know, there wouldn't be an affordable housing if we, if it went to a market-rate developer, but of course, we have our affordable housing production plan, so that if market-rate housing was built there, it'd be certain. so that if market-rate housing was built there, a certain percentage of units would be de-restricted to lower incomes. Let's clarify.
But you're clearly hoping for 100% affordable. Councilmember McCowen, get your hand up.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think Surplus Lands Act is 60 days. But, and so if it is 60, I would agree that 60 days would be the appropriate amount of time.
The Surplus Lands Act is 60 days for a notice of availability to be out and issued, followed by if someone accepts it, 90 days negotiation to see if they can arrive at an acceptable agreement.
Is that the framework you would like to incorporate in your motion if you're going to make one? Councilmember Winter?
Yeah, I will move that we move the staff recommendation with the addition that there are conditions that the land be, when it first, St. Monica's first wants to sell it, to be offered for 60 days to 100% affordable housing developers. And should any express interest in there be a successive 90-day period in which to conclude negotiations for the purchase at fair market value and thereafter they could sell it to market-rate developers.
I'll second that motion. Councilmember Hara.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember Winter, seconded by Councilmember Hara, with a comment upcoming from Councilmember...
So I understand the 60-day issue. Having trouble with my sound, I'm sorry. But I don't understand the 90 days. This is quite a small parcel. I think 90 days is usually contemplated for something bigger. And I think that maybe 60 days and then either 30 or 60 days. But 90 days is an awfully long time to close a deal with an affordable houser on a parcel this size, I think. But certainly, Ted, you know better about that.
I don't. That's why I was looking for advice. And I was hoping Mr. Agel would magically pop up on the blue jean screen.
Well, meanwhile, let's go to Councilmember Davis.
Well, I share Councilmember Hemmerich's concern. We're dealing here with a nonprofit, St. Monica's, who, when they decide to sell the land, will, you know, have expenses incurred during that time that the land is available for sale to the nonprofits. And I think then giving a potential buyer 90 days to drag out to close the deal, you know, might strain the nonprofit's resources. I understand that deals don't close overnight, but I think if we have a 60-day window whereby they need to give rise to first refusal to nonprofits, and then an additional 30 or 60 days to close the deal should be sufficient and not put too much of a financial strain on them. But I just want to remind people we're dealing with a nonprofit here, so.
Is there any further suggestion or clarification from staff? We were hoping to get somebody in here who has dealt with the situation. City Manager...
I wonder if we could get, Kevin, can we get the applicant back just to hear? I just want to know what they think is reasonable. I mean, they are a nonprofit. I just want to know what they can bear.
Well, the public hearing is over, but unless there's objection from the council, and I don't see any, we can bring the applicant back to answer a question. Does the city attorney have any concerns about our doing that for this item?
No, I believe you have the right to ask a question if they're available to answer it.
Seeing no objection, with that opinion from the city attorney's office and with the question from Councilmember Hemmerich, I will hope, and in fact, he already has, the applicant is on our screen.
Mr. Mayor, nice to see you again.
Councilmember Hemmerich, ask away.
You're muted, councilmembers.
You're muted. Good point. Now it's going to sound even worse, and forgive me, I'm sorry. But, so, the original proposal was 60 days to offer it to affordable housing developers, and then 90 days to basically negotiate and close the deal. And we're wondering whether 90 days is too much or whether that's a reasonable request. Some of us want 30 days or 60 days, for instance.
So, speaking through the mayor, we're happy to do the first availability to affordable housing developers, and hopefully that works. And so doing that for a period of 60 days with an additional, you know, I'd say 60 days to finish the deal, because that ties us up. And, you know, we're a nonprofit ourselves, and we have a fiduciary responsibility with this resource to our parishioners and the people who support us. And so I've got to think about them also.
So are you saying 60 and 60, 60 days open and 60 days to negotiate? Is that right?
To negotiate and close, that's correct.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so now it's back before us. We have a motion which the maker may or may not wish to amend. Let's hear it from Councilmember Winter.
Well, let's talk about parliamentary procedure. I can amend it or someone can make a friendly amendment. I defer to you, Mayor, on how you think it's best to handle it. I can just be direct. I will motion and see if it's favorable to second or to say that there's a 60-day window in which it's offered to affordable housing developers and 60-day window to negotiate and close the deal thereafter.
That is acceptable.
Of course, it's probably understood that if nobody, you know, has any interest from the affordable housing development community in the first 60 days, then obviously the second 60 days doesn't kick in.
Okay, so the motion has now been amended to be 60-60. Is there further discussion on the motion? I don't see any, so I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Mayor Protim O'Day.
Yes.
Councilmember Hara.
Yes.
Councilmember Winter.
Yes.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Councilmember Hemmerich.
Yes.
Councilmember McCowen.
Yes.
And Mayor McHill.
Yes, so the motion passes unanimously by a 7 to 0 vote of the city council on Item 7B. That concludes our ordinances and moves us on to councilmember items.
Next, we have Item 13A, request of Mayor McHill, Councilmembers McCowen and Davis. The council directs staff to prepare a letter to the Los Angeles County Office of Education in response to the petition filed by the Malibu City Council for splitting Santa Monica and Malibu into two separate independent school districts, affirming our city council's support for such a split, but only if the terms of separation, including but not limited to, the division of revenues and assets are fair and just to students in Santa Monica schools and provide robust and equal education opportunity for both Malibu and Santa Monica students. And I don't see that you have any callers for this item at this point.
Well, council, I worked for the Santa Monica-Malibu Unified School District for about 25 years, during which time our two communities cooperated pretty wonderfully. But things have changed, and for the last few years, there have been negotiations underway to do what is misleadingly called unification, which is really the splitting of the two cities into separate unified school districts. And recently, that went south with a motion by the Malibu City Council to just go straight to LACO, which is the LA County, something, Office of Education, bypassing negotiations that had been going on. And we have concerns about the fairness that that would represent to Santa Monica students. And today, I got a letter from Member the Public also pointing out that the split would mean that Malibu would be an almost-all-white school district to the detriment of the biracial education that people now have in a unified school district. So that's why this is on the agenda tonight. Councilmember Davis, it actually had more detailed conversations, I believe, with the school board and education community. So do you want to add more detail, Councilmember Davis?
Well, I just want to say that there will be a hearing before LACO. We're not quite sure when. And so we think it's important that, since the Malibu City Council has obviously weighed in on the issue of "unification," that we, on behalf of the students who will be attending Santa Monica schools, should there be a separation, weigh in on behalf of those students. I also want to make the point that we're not trying to impose terms, specific terms, on the separation. We're expressing our desire for equity and fairness in terms of, among other things, division of assets. But as you pointed out, there are other terms that need to be considered and will be considered, it's my understanding, by LACO. The one point I do want to make, as someone who's been involved in these school funding measures for well over a decade, is that whenever Santa Monica either adopted the Facilities Master Use Agreement or passed Measure Y and YY or Measure GS and GSH, the issue always did arise as to whether or not monies generated in Santa Monica should stay only with Santa Monica students. And at that point, the people who were the proponents of those measures always said no because they were all our students. So long as Santa Monica-Malibu Unified School District exists, those are all our students. And all we're asking for now is that, as we negotiate the terms of the separation, we keep that in mind that, as we head towards separation, they're still all our students.
I mentioned that I worked for the Santa Monica-Malibu Public Schools. But Councilmember McCowen, you're on this item with us, and you went to those schools. So what are your thoughts on this?
I did, and I currently have a kindergartner going to school in Santa Monica-Malibu Unified School District. And I've always been really proud of our unified school district and that it provides opportunity, equitable and fair opportunity for students in both cities to receive a diverse education. I remember very well the first graduating class from Malibu High School, I believe, started with my, I want to say I was in sixth or seventh grade when the first graduating class entered their freshman year. And we've seen so much good come of the partnership and so much development of the school sites in Malibu and the facilities agreement that we have has definitely been mutually beneficial. So I look forward to seeing an equitable and fair solution out of this and to the extent that our council can assist, I want to be part of that.
Now that we've introduced and explained the item, there may have been some people who have heard this and wanted to comment, so do we have any phone calls? If so, I'll open the public hearing on Item 13A.
There are no callers for this item.
All right, then. The public hearing is thereby closed, and the matter is before the council for discussion or motion. Councilmember Hara.
So I want to thank you and commend you for bringing this forward. As some of you might know, back in 2004, I ran for the school board, and it was actually one of the top issues was the split of the two districts. I am concerned that not only are we talking about the inequities of the split of the revenues, but also the inequities for our students, not only the ones that are here, but also the ones that will attend school in Malibu. It is a major concern for me that those that do not have will not be serviced as they should. So I am really thankful that you brought this forward because I think that we should definitely be a part of whatever the, or weigh in on that decision. I am not saying that we should be opposed because that is what they have been asking for for years. However, it definitely needs to be, we need to ensure that all of our students will be serviced with the same equity value. I think that their voices from Malibu might not be heard, so I am really proud of all of you for bringing it forward. It's disheartening to think that in a city like Santa Monica, where we have so many renters, every single time that these renters with low income have been asked to vote and tax themselves, tax themselves, for a better education, we all have been there to ensure that all of our students are successful and we provide for them. So I am hoping that the Malibu residents and the Malibu City Council will be listening really closely to what our stance is, and that is that all of our students are successful.
Well, thank you for that. And I think the three of us who happen to be the ones to put this on the agenda just happen to be the three. I think probably our entire community feels pretty strongly about this. Are there any other comments or motion?
I move the item.
And I will second that. But Councilmember Davis, let me ask you if we could amend it a little bit. The way it's expressed right now on the agenda, the primary focus of our concern is the distribution of assets and making sure that all the students are treated fairly. I take very seriously the letter we got from the public today pointing out that this split would mean that Malibu would become an almost-all-white district and ours would become less diverse. And I think that I'd like to ask of the direction, include that staff mention and explore that in the letter we sent as well. Is that friendly to you as the maker?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
And by the way, I believe that is one of the criteria that LACO needs to evaluate in deciding whether or not to approve the split, so it's perfectly appropriate to raise that issue.
I believe it's criterion number four. You're right of the list. Are there any other comments on this? The nun will take a roll call vote.
Councilmember McCowen?
Yes.
Councilmember Hemmerich?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Winter?
Yes.
Councilmember Hara?
Yes.
Mayor Protim O'Day?
Yes.
And Mayor McHill?
Yes. So for every student of Santa Monica-Malibu, every teacher, every administrator, every parent, we got your back by 7 to 0 vote at the city council. That's the unanimous vote on Item 13A. That concludes our agenda for tonight, but this being a regular meeting, we have public input. And let me turn to the clerk and ask her to call that.
Public input. Public comment is permitted only on items not on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. State law prohibits the city council from taking any action on items not listed on the agenda, including issues raised under this agenda item, and you have two callers for this.
You dropped off a bit. I think you said we have two callers. Is that correct?
That's correct. You have, yes, you have two callers.
Let us open public input and hear from those callers.
Transferring Denise Barton.
Denise Barton, welcome to the meeting. Your time starts now.
Good evening. I again have to question, living in a building with 50-plus units and not having a resident manager, and I know we've been here before. As I'm sure you already know, GrayStar Management has taken over management duties at my building at 1318 Second Street for Sierra Corporate Management, the owners of the building. Basically, one criminal entity hiring another criminal entity. Remember my previous experience with them and the mold at AO Apartments? So since GrayStar has taken over management of the building, we have not had a resident manager result in one of my neighbors locking herself out of her apartment between the hours of 6:00 and 10:00 p.m., when there's no management or security, so she had to wait almost an hour for maintenance to come back and let her in. In addition, I and other tenants' key fobs have not been working to open the front door within the last week, which is said to be due to the doors being boarded up. And if you ask the girl in the office for her phone number or unit number due to her living on-site, claiming to be the resident manager, her response is, "I can't give you that information," just like William Brown, the last manager from Sierra Corporate Management. So I hope you can see, again, the building has no resident manager, and the building has affordable housing units. Isn't a resident manager required for those? Or would you, again, be running a scam for funding? Finally, and the unidentified white powder making me and other tenants sick is, again, being put out regularly. The girl in the office is unwilling to even acknowledge the problem, just like William Brown before her. Legal aid was no help in this area, unable to get reasonable accommodation for me or anyone else in this situation, just like Jim Kemper at the Housing Authority, who says the Housing Authority is not responsible for making sure the tenants do not get sick due to it going from the front door of the building... due to it going from the front door of the building to their units. Thank you.
Thank you.
Transferring Jonathan Foster.
Jonathan Foster, welcome to the meeting. Your time starts now.
Hello. God bless you guys. Jonathan Foster, I've called, and there's a 15-minute, you've got to call in 15 minutes ahead of time, and I missed last week because of this. I can't tell if you guys are going to keep talking and keep talking and keep talking. How do I know if it's 15 minutes? I couldn't get in last week. I wanted to talk about the Promenade 3.0. Oh, and by the way, too, if you call up a little early and you want to, like, try to get early, you can't get in on the one that's ahead of it. You can't get in on that. That's, something's got changed. On Promenade 3.0, the past Pasadena mayor, and he was the manager of Santa Monica, I had talked about the CSOs, and I wanted to say, so there's nothing wrong with the CSOs. It's not them. It's what the Mall Bayside District turned Santa Monica, downtown Santa Monica, seems kind of racist. What they did through the corrupt legislation they passed with these corrupt councils, they have constructed laws that are unconstitutional, and the CSOs, what they were told they can do to performers is wrong. And the CSOs are very good at doing what they are taught. They're experts at that. They do awesome. But what they are taught is wrong and corrupt and needs to change, and it has to some extent. But apparently, the manager didn't know this. Now he's gone, and I heard the 3.0, there was so much on, I kind of hardly listened to the guy talk, and I respect him. I loved that guy. He was awesome. I really appreciated him. So, the CSOs, what they've been told to do out there, now it's changing to the actual, like, enforcement group of downtown Santa Monica. They don't have no power. They have to call somebody else to have some, you know, a CSO to come over. It wastes a bunch of time. When the legislation that they made in the past, it really actually hurts people. So, there's a great thing on the promenade.
Thank you. Your time is now up.
Thank you.
I can see if there are any other calls waiting.
That was our final caller.
Well, that concludes public input, item 14, for tonight, and that also concludes our agenda for this Tuesday, November 10th, 2020, meeting of the city council. We will be back in two weeks. Our next meeting is on November 24th, 2020. We'll be starting at 5:30, as we usually do for a regular meeting. Until then, we're adjourned. Good night.